There is, alright. So we are live. Let me make sure that, alright. Well, let's go ahead and get started. If we get some people that are trickling in, that'd be cool. Thank you guys so much for coming. This is not going to take the entire hour and a half. I just left that open because if anybody did show up that has not been here before, I did want to leave ample opportunity for you guys to take a look around and see kind of what we have here. My staff and I, we always talk about, you can't really fully grasp the mission and what we do here until you actually come in and see the place, you see the animals, and you see the interactivity that we have here, and then it clicks, right? I guess I should introduce myself for anybody who doesn't know me, especially in TV land there. My name's Andy McKee. I'm the owner and CEO here at the Zoology and Science Center. A little bit about this place. We started way back in 2019, actually when I was still teaching middle school science. And I taught in Huntington, and we started our herpetology program. Herpetology is study reptiles and amphibians, and we started getting calls about people needing help with their animals, specifically reptiles and amphibians. So we started bringing in these sick animals or unwanted animals, and we started working with them, and that's, those were the animals that actually started the rescue inadvertently. So my students would learn about these animals as we're rehabilitating them, and then we just kept getting phone calls and phone calls and phone calls. Then COVID hit, which was super fun. So I did what any normal person would do and start a business in the middle of COVID. So, you know, this started from great ideas, didn't it? But anyways, we were getting overran by animals. We knew that we needed to try to fundraise, so we started our nonprofit. After that year of teaching during COVID, it was pretty rough, and it was apparent that we were kind of at a crux. So we ended up starting a rescue and did that full-time. I was very fortunate. I'm 100% disabled through the VA. I'm an Army veteran. I got hurt overseas and 100% service disabled, so I'm very blessed in the fact that I did not quote-unquote "have" to work, so I was able to devote resources, take care of my family while also taking care of these animals. And kind of building a program that would help more animals in an area that wasn't, it didn't exist. So we started and incorporated West Virginia's very first and only reptile and amphibian rescue. That just grew and grew and grew. We started off in a little itty-bitty office in Huntington, and it was never intended to be open during, for the public. But we started to do these shows all throughout the region. We traveled all over the place and doing these educational shows with our rehabilitated animals, and it just kind of caught on, and people got curious about what we were doing, and they wanted to see the animals on a more frequent basis. And we had the opportunity to move up to the Huntington Mall and take over a former Lane Bryant Women's Clothing Store. And just like starting a business during COVID, that was a great idea. What did any reasonable human do to a former Lane Bryant Women's Clothing Store? You put alligators in them. So we opened up the Reptile House and Rescue. And that was our first kind of delve into the community service and education aspect of our rescue. That mission kind of morphed into what it is today. Last year, we had the amazing opportunity to move up here to Putnam County and take over this gorgeous building we have today. Things have grown so fast that it feels like if I were to continually update everybody, we would have updates almost every single day about something new that's happening. So the reason I wanted to do this town hall, and I'm very appreciative of you guys coming in, is to basically kind of data dump everything we've got going on right now, and also kind of implore you guys to think of this place more as a community project rather than it just being a rescue, whether it just be, rather than just being a field trip place, rather than just being a classroom annex. I want you guys to think about this place as truly the future for our community. Most of you guys know that the ultimate end goal of all of this is to build a full-scale conservation zoo and aquarium here in our region. One of the updates that we're going to have here in a little bit is kind of where we are with that project. But I think we start here because right now that is a long-term, large-scale project. Scale, get it? Snake. I'm so sorry. But it is a, it is a large-scale project, and I truly believe that we need to focus on this place right now and then let that kind of happen as this place grows. I really want to focus on doing this right here in Valley Park the best we can possibly do it before we move into the next steps. So, let's talk about the next steps for here. We have a phased approach of development here at the Zoology Zone. For those that have been here kind of since the beginning of a, gosh, was it last summer? Summer before last, right? We've been here about a year, little over a year now. Hey Joe! We've been here a little over a year now, and those that were here for the sneak preview to now, whoa, it has grown a ton. People have really, they know that we exist here now. There's still quite a few people that have no idea that we're here. We desperately need signs, but people know that we're here now. Our field trips have been amazing. We've had lots of people, you know, word of mouth. Organic growth has been tremendous, and honestly, I mean, no paid ad is going to do the same as organic growth. Those in marketing know that. So I'm extremely thankful and extremely blessed for you guys, you know, helping spread the word and kind of getting behind us on this. So where we are now, we have been able to support ourselves up until a certain point. Day-to-day operations, regular overhead, that finally has been, you know, achieved-ish. I joke around all the time, I say, "This is the place my disability built," because we don't receive any outside funding, none, zero. We don't receive any federal grants, we don't receive any state grants, and we don't receive any local funding at all. And we've been able to achieve this without any of that. Can you imagine what we would be able to do with just one wing of that? Local funds, with state, federal funds. The problem that is massive. One of the big areas that we are needing to grow tremendously is our Board of Directors. I would humbly ask each and every one of you to think about maybe what you could bring to this organization to help it grow, and if you are not comfortable in a, in that type of position, do you know somebody who is, who would fit that mold? And think about who would be invested in this mission for our community? Because I truly believe that that's where it starts. I believe it starts with a group of like-minded individuals here for a mission. I tell everybody, this has never, ever, ever once been an Andy McKee project. I never wanted this to be an Andy McKee project. I want this to be a regional community project that can continue to grow and serve our community long after I'm gone, because most of our tortoises are going to outlive all of us. So I definitely need somebody here for them, okay? So we have taken steps. We've applied for multiple grants, especially on the federal and state side, and this is a very unique place. We started off very niche, so when I would get denied for grants, we're like, I would get the things that say, you know, "I just, it's not your application," right? It's just, we don't fund stuff like this, right? Because we were very niche. But now that we are here, and we've been able to start teaching traditional classroom settings to our homeschool communities, now that we've been able to add a STEM and STEAM hallway for developmental motor skill development with our Junior Explorers Adventures for ages zero to six, now that we've been able to host all-inclusive field trips for our special needs community, this has been something tremendous that we've been able to grow and offer these programs to our community. So now we start checking more boxes. We start, we're not that niche anymore. We're not just a reptile and amphibian rescue. We're a lot more than that, and we can serve a multitude of our community. We can truly be all-inclusive. We just need people to see the opportunity of that, and we need people to help us get that word out, right? So with our board strength, we definitely need somebody that is able to look at grants and actually search for grants that would fit us. We need people within our local community leaders that can be a voice in the commission, that could be a voice with the city, that could be a voice in the, in the state legislature, right? For people to know that West Virginia has a resource that has never existed before, right? Because, you know, I'm the only weirdo that's bringing alligators to schools as of right now that I know, and I'll keep on doing it, by golly. So that's where I think it all starts. There are places within our region that receive hundreds of thousands of dollars in state, federal, and local funds. Some have not even opened yet, and, you know, they've done a tremendous job at fundraising, which is great. So we know that people are out there that want their community to grow, but I can't do it myself. I just can't. I just can't do it myself. We need your all's help in doing that. So by sharing posts, by interacting with posts, with, you know, letting people know, "Hey, what do I do with my kids on a Saturday? My kids are driving me crazy." Well, take them to the Zoology Zone and maybe something will bite them, right? You know, that's, or maybe they'll watch somebody get bit. It's, I tell everybody for the, whenever I do my shows, people watch the shows and watch me handle all these animals. It's like a NASCAR race, you know? You don't watch NASCAR for the race, you watch it for the wrecks, you know? So that's like, yeah, come to the show and maybe Andy will get bit by something, and usually I will. Usually, it's Lily getting bit by Gary, Gary the Snake over here, yes, absolutely. And that's hilarious. But, you know, so that's, that's where we can really use your all's help. As far as funding goes, I kind of alluded to where we are before, and there are some major, major, major changes that are happening here at the Zoology Zone, and that's kind of our first major announcement. We have been working a partnership with a zoological facility down south, and we are really kind of working a partnership to where it's looking like we're going to get some new animals here that are not just reptiles and amphibians. So what that's going to do is that's basically going to bring more of a well-rounded conservation effort here to our facility. So what that means is we are going to be moving forward with the pathway to accreditation for AZA accreditation. AZA, for those that don't know, is the American Zoological Association. It is the gold standard of zoos and aquariums here in the country, some actually outside of the country. AZA accreditation is what Cincinnati has, what the Bronx Zoo has, what Newport Aquarium has. Any zoo and aquarium that you have heard that you're like, "Oh man, that's awesome," is AZA accredited, right? So we are moving into the Pathway Program, which assigns us a mentor that is on the board. It's a board-appointed mentor that will help us achieve the standards of animal care, animal enrichment, and everything that goes into being an AZA accredited facility. So we are moving into the Pathway Program there. What that also does by us having more animals here that aren't reptiles is it brings different types of standards into play as well through USDA, and again with AZA standards, if you're meeting AZA standards, you're meeting USDA standards. The problem with that, it's not really a problem, but it is a problem. The problem with that is we can absolutely not accept any new animals to be a draw for our facility without building their enclosures first, specifically to AZA and USDA standards. And what that also means is we need to really look at our standards here and evaluate if each animal is where they are supposed to be before we even bring more other, more animals in. Now, I can confidently say that our animals right here are extremely well taken care of, they are fed, they are, they have enrichment, they are doing just fine, right? But I would really like to get them in prettier enclosures, I would like to give them more room, I would like for our animals that are off exhibit right now to have places that are on exhibit that would be a draw right now. So with the animals that we have now, we are currently fundraising right now to finish our wing down that hallway. So for those that have been in this building before, this building has been kind of a conglomerate of things, and it's in a big U shape. So down that hallway is our STEM hallway that we've built. It's also got our party room, so our birthday parties and everything like that, and meeting spaces, those are, that's all back there. So that's where we do some classroom stuff, that's where we do our birthday parties, that's kind of where all that is. Down this hallway, it used to be where they did the birthday parties. There was like a gift shop down there, so it's just kind of this open space. Right now, the alligators, we have two rescued American alligators back there right now that are in a, that are in their enclosure. It's functional, it's very large, it is just not pretty. It's not ready to be on exhibit yet. Our aquatic turtles are back there as well. For those that visited us at the Huntington Mall, we had a ton of aquatic turtles, and it was a pond right in the middle of our place, and people could actually feed the turtles. It was great, it was interactive, people loved it, I loved it, it was awesome. We just don't have any room for that out here. So they're back there right now. They are happy, they're in about 1,200 to 1,300 gallons of water right now, so it's got a huge space back there for them, it's just not ready to be on exhibit yet. We also have a 200-pound African spurred tortoise, which is the third largest land tortoise in the entire world. We've got him back there in a big temporary enclosure. His name's Herschel, right? Herschel, that's his picture right there. He's a very stately gentleman. Herschel is awesome, and anybody who sees Herschel, you gasp, it's an audible gasp. And he's back there, but it's not ready. So we've got all of these experiences that are ready to go, and we are roughly anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 away from having enough funding for that wing to be done. Done. Herschel will have an entire room to himself where you will be able to actually feed him. The alligators, we're going to do like kind of a fishing for alligators experience where you can actually feed the alligators with a special type of fishing pole. So that's pretty fun, they are really looking forward to that because they're always hungry. So those are things that are ready to go, but just because we are barely keeping up, no extra is going back into that. So we've created some programs called the Dollar Club, and online you should be able to see a QR code up in one of the corners that says Dollar Club. If you scan that code, click on that code, it should take you to sign up for the Dollar Club. The Dollar Club is a program, actually my wife came up with, and it allows people to donate a monthly reoccurring donation as little as $1. So the thought process behind this was, yes, we need sponsors, yes, we need partners, yes, we need grants, yes, we need large-scale capital. However, not everybody is in a position to do that. But most people are in a position to part with $12 throughout the entire year. So we have about 12,000 people on our Facebook page right now, and if we could get half of the, half of our Facebook followers to donate $1 a month, just $1 a month, in just a few months, we would have enough to build the rest of that exhibit. Then, once that's built, that money goes into our next exhibit, which goes towards the alligator exhibit out front that I'll touch out about in a little bit. Once that's done, the alligator exhibit's built, now we can do to our greenhouse in the back. Once that's done, classroom space in the back. Once that's done. Once that's done, revamp and second floor in here. So we have a plan for all of this, and it literally starts with $1 a month, right? It's been tough, it's been tough. We have not, it's not gained the traction that I thought that it would gain. So that is another reason why we definitely need people to help us get that word out. Because I truly believe that that is a very easy way, if marketed correctly, that small donations can make a giant impact, right? And that's, that's what, that's what the goal is, is to, is for our community to build this place for our community, right? That's the goal, is this to be a community project, right? And add value to our community. This has been by far the most welcoming area that I have ever been in and been able to have experienced in my entire life. You know, we've met a lot of great people in our journey, but by far, here in Putnam County, here in the city of Hurricane, it has been just an insanely welcoming community with open arms. And I can never say thank you enough for that. It has just been, it's been, it's been an experience that I, I don't really know how to put into words, so it's really cool. So that's even more motivation to get this done and get this moving and continue the momentum that we've already gained, right? All right. So the first major announcement that I wanted to talk about were the animals coming in. They are definitely going to need some additional space, so we've got some construction planned. I wanted to have visuals here, but my artistic capabilities are, well, they're crap, they're terrible, they're absolutely awful, you don't want me drawing anything, but I think we're working on that, right? Yes. Okay, we're working on that. So we should have some artistic renderings of what we are going to be doing that will be pushed out fairly soon. But essentially, to give you guys an idea, where the partitions are back here, where the little stanchions are right here, that is going to become a wall about maybe seven foot tall. So when you first come in, it's just a little partition wall, and we don't want to block the amazing art here, so we are putting a cutout there and putting axolotls right there. So you'll be able to look through the axolotl tank and see Zoology Zone Science Center right there, it'd be a really cool visual when you first come in. What that's going to do is that is going to allow us to move all of these animals, our colubrids here, onto that wall, that wall. This entire wall will be pushed out a little bit, about eight and a half feet, and this will kind of be the new wall here. Built-ins will go there, and the new animals that should be coming in within the next few months will probably be out here on display, or we'll end up moving them over here. Our big snakes, the construction starts in two weeks, I believe. About two weeks, our big snakes are coming out here on the floor. We have a 17-foot reticulated python named Lilo, and we have a 14-foot albino Burmese python named Brittany, for obvious reasons, all the Britney Spears fans in here, yes. And for anybody who is wanting the true Britney Spears experience for a low donation on the Dollar Club, we can make that happen for you, okay? Yes. And no, I am not dressing up as Britney Spears this Halloween for your all's sake, because you would not be able to unsee that, okay? I do, look, I'm, I'm, I'm '07 Brittany right here, so, yes. We'll talk. But, so these guys are actually coming out here, they are going to be right beside our science table, so one will be here and one will be here. They'll be in big eight-by-eight-by-eight boxes, essentially, glass on either side, or two panels of glass on either side that is being, really, they're helping us out, a glass place is really, really helping us out, giving us a good deal on the glass, it's very expensive. But those will be built, the construction will start here in the next couple of weeks. So you're going to be able to see tangible evidence of real change here in the next couple of weeks. But that is kind of the beginning of Phase One. So the built-ins here with the new animals, the partition wall there, but we really need to get that wing built out. So I'm really hoping that we can make a push for our Dollar Club, and then I really need help getting the word out to local businesses that sponsorship is available. People can literally sponsor a large exhibit like this for less than $5,000, right? And it's pretty much what it costs in order to get these things built. And we'll put a big plaque up, I will name this place, the Dagon Toyota Zoology Zone Science Center, if they want to, you know, throw a, what a Prius cost at us, okay? We can do a lot with very little. But the biggest thing is sponsorships do exist and are welcomed because we want our community to be involved. I would love if every single cage, every single exhibit had a local business on it. That'd be great. We welcome thousands and thousands of people here every single month, right? Every single month, people come in here and they would see that. So there is tangible marketing advertising opportunity for that. So that is really our main push right now, is to try to look for some sponsors, really try to build out our board, and help us move into that next level, that next gear. I'm stamping on the clutch, I just need help shifting, all right? It's my car reference for the day. So Phase One is kind of our, our exhibit, our wing down here for the, for the animals, and then our major stuff in here. One of the big fundraisers that we have alluded to here in the past couple of weeks that we have been working feverishly on is our first major fundraiser event that we have done here at the Zoology Zone. We've done some little bashes, we've done some workshops, we've done some things like that, but we are putting on a pop culture convention here in November 16th, and we have a winner for the name, and it is ValleyCon. So I'm very, very, very excited for that, it's ValleyCon. Huricon came in as a close, close second, but I can tell you, we did a thing with voting, and if you voted, if you liked and shared it, like counted as one, share counted as one, but if you joined the Dollar Club and you liked and shared it, those turned into five and five. And it literally, ValleyCon won by five votes because somebody signed up for the Dollar Club. So I'm very excited for that. So we are officially putting on ValleyCon, and I think that that really encompasses the entire region here, here in the Tayside Valley area. We have rented out the entire Valley Park Convention Center on November 16th. We've got a little over 8,000 square foot of space over there, we are looking somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 60 available vendors over there. We are really putting together a conglomerate of everything imaginable, so everybody will have an opportunity to come and enjoy themselves and see all kinds of really neat things over there. Now, the cool part about that is where ValleyCon is going to be next door, we will also be open over here. So your admission to ValleyCon also gets you admission over here to the Zoology Zone. So it's really kind of a twofer thing that we're going to be able to do, so I'm really excited. We'll have animals over there, we're going to do cosplay contests over there, we're going to do, man, I hope somebody shows up as Britney Spears, we can bring Brittany over there, it's going to be really fun, unless it's scary, and then it's, oh, boy. So it's not going to be me. But lots of really fun things, I'm very excited about that. Thank you for everybody here that is in the planning committee, we all have headaches, but it is going to be super, super, super fun, and it's going to be an annual thing. So, and ultimately, what that's going to do is it's going to bring people from outside of our region to our region. So Kelly, definitely going to push that so we can bring people not only to ValleyCon, but here in our town and here in our community, and we can showcase, hey, come here for one thing, stay for everything else, right? Because it is cool freaking place here, and I'm really, really, really excited about that. We just hope that it's going to be not a freezing November 16th, it'll be a decently pleasant November 16th weather. We never know, who knows? So I'm very excited about that. We are big time looking for sponsors for that event right now, trying to cover those costs, we're looking for vendors, the forums are already out for sponsorship, vendor forums should actually be published, what is today, Monday, by Wednesday? So vendor forums will be out by Wednesday, by the way, I didn't put that on the thing, but it'll be out by Wednesday, there you go. So vendor forums will be out by Wednesday, so actual vendors will be able to sign up and reserve their spaces. So I'm very excited about that. We hope that's going to be a good, a big success. We have giveaways, food trucks, trying to get some live entertainment for that one too, so we're, we're really pushing that one hard, and I'm very, very excited about that. Any questions before I move on at all? I do want this to not just be the me show, this, this whole thing is, is for the community to ask questions. Do I have anybody questions before I do move on? Okay, all right, cool. I will check comments and respond to comments if anybody does have anything, so please, if you do have questions while you're watching this video, please put them in the comments, and I will do my best to get to them as soon as humanly possible. All right. Next is where we're going here. We've got a phased approach for the Zoology Zone. Like I said, our, our ultimate goal is to build a full-scale conservation zoo and aquarium here in our region over the next 10 years, right? That is all contingent on funding and an adequate place, right? So I think it is very important that we still keep that in our sights, but we focus on making this place the best we can make it, the right way first. So where we are moving with this after Phase One, with the wing being built, with the, the built-ins here, with all of the animals in large enclosures, and our, our rescue operations are continuing to go, we're still out in the community, after that is achieved, we are in a time crunch right now, especially with our alligators. Our, both of our alligators that we have currently in our facility are roughly five and six years old. Alligators stay fairly small, and by small, I mean like from nose to tip, you've seen, if you've seen Ally the alligator, she's about that big now. I actually saw a picture from one year ago, literally one year ago, and she's about this big now, she was about that big a year ago. And that's when they hit maturity. Once they hit maturity, they start growing exponentially, right? They can grow anywhere from six inches to 12 inches every single year, and that's just in length, they get strong. So we only have a few more years, maybe, before they outgrow even the large exhibit that we have built indoors now. The really cool part about where we are here at Valley Park is we have the opportunity to go that way and that way. So in the next three years, we are currently raising $1.25 million to build an indoor alligator exhibit right out front. We've had this surveyed, and it's about 11,000 square feet, just a hair shy of 11,000 square feet right out front. The plan is to build a wall all the way around our green space out front. The entire front will be glass all the way through, you'll be able to see through it like a big atrium. There will be a greenhouse roof on at least half of it that will be retractable, partially retractable. This building is plumbed with natural gas, so on the backside here towards the building, we will have natural gas blowers to make sure that we are able to thermo-regulate that entire area out front, but it is going to be as natural as you can get it and mimic the Florida Everglades year-round. We are digging swampland out front, right? So once we get to a certain point, we're going to have it environmentally surveyed to make sure that no underground pipes are happening or anything, we do not think that there is, just looking at plans right now. So we think that we'll be able to build shallow swampland and have a meandering walkway all the way around it. So the alligators will be able to be in a very naturalistic habitat for the rest of their lives. What that will also do is that will leave us more space to be a rescue for American alligators and other large aquatic lizards. Unfortunately, here in the state of West Virginia, it is legal to own an American alligator and other crocodilians as pets. That is unfortunate for public safety, it's unfortunate for the animal, and it's really unfortunate because it's just common sense that people really shouldn't have alligators as pets. Most of you guys saw a couple year, or a couple weeks ago, maybe a few weeks ago, an alligator was actually released down in McDowell County. Somebody most likely had it as a pet, and they couldn't take care of it anymore, didn't want it anymore, and they just released it in a lake. Unfortunately, you know, it was about four hours away, unfortunately, DNR had to come out, and they subsequently killed the alligator. Wasn't the alligator's fault it was out, it was our fault that we even had it. And I say "we" as in humans. It should have not happened, the whole situation was just a mess. But it's an unfortunate reality that until laws change, people are going to get animals that they shouldn't have, right? So the goal is, if we can have a large enough place to be an outlet for something like that to happen, we can save more animals. And that is the name of the game here. Our mission, quite literally, is to inspire wildlife and environmental conservation through hands-on immersive education. We want to get people excited about learning, we want to get people excited about these animals, we want to get people excited about science, because once they're excited about it, we can convince them to help save it. So that's why we do what we do, at the root of everything, that's why we do this, right? So not only will this just be one freaking cool exhibit, right? These two windows right here are going to be entry and exit. You're going to come in, you're going to walk through the entry, and you're going to meander all the way around these swamps, and you'll see gators on either side, you'll see other animals that will have open-air exhibits out there, we'll see the Burmese pythons out there and talk about the invasive properties of what's happening right now in Florida. We are going to create an entire ecosystem that doesn't exist here in West Virginia, right here in West Virginia, for people to learn about. That's immersive learning, right? You can't teach that in a classroom, trust me, I've tried. Until you are immersed in a subject matter, that's when you truly understand what's going on, and we're able to do that. Crappy part is it costs a lot of money, but I think that if we can talk to people and show them the value of what we are trying to do here, this is going to be something that doesn't exist anywhere in West Virginia, especially here in our region, right? So that is Phase Two, right? But we can't get to Phase Two without this stuff in here first, all right? So once we get that built, the next step is to build an open-air greenhouse down here in the middle of our atrium. So once that's built, our South America exhibit will move out here in the middle of the courtyard. So basically, it'll just be a [inaudible] that will be [inaudible]. So you'll be able to see all the animals, be able, we'll have a little amphitheater out there where you can see live feeding shows, then people can come back in here, they'll see all the animals in here, all the colubrids. Eventually, by that point, we'll have all of the animals grouped by their region. So literally, you will be here in North America, then you'll be over here in Asia, then you'll be over here in Europe-ish, and then you'll be over here in Africa, and then you go outside into the greenhouse and immediately start sweating because, you know, that is South America, and you'll be in the rainforest, and you'll be greeted by this big 20-foot double-sided waterfall, right? And you'll see all of the animals around from that area. Now, the cool part is, it'll be the animals that you're looking at right now. Now, they're in exhibits right now, but, you know, this is a blue-tongued skink from Southeast Asia and Indonesia, this is a legless lizard from Central and Northern Europe, these two are ball pyth, or that's a ball python right there from Central Africa, right? The animals that you see here that are all rescues, that not only do we get to teach the science behind, but we also get to talk about their rescue story, are going to be in these amazing exhibits. It's not like I'm just going to a pet shop and saying, hell, give me this Amazon tree boa, no. We're getting some animals in, we're actually getting Amazon Basin boas that were a Department of Justice seizure because they were smuggled in from South America. They brought in these, these, these crazy, very, very aggressive snakes. These people went and caught them and brought them and tried to smuggle them into America, and one of the, the female snakes was gravida, it had And one of the, the female snakes was grabbing, it had babies, right? It, it had babies. The mom died and the babies were just kind of there. So they were saved, they were rescued and now this place has these babies that, what are you going to do? So without places like other reptile and amphibian rescues like us, what are those things going to do? They want to die, right? And that's not right. Now whether you like snakes or not, whether you like reptiles or not, no animal deserves to be mistreated, neglected or abused, right? I think we can all agree with that. So that is another facet of why it is so important that we have these animals on exhibit and talk about their rescue story. So we'll be able to do that with the alligators, we'll be able to do that with our South American animals. And then, once that's built, next step is to tie all of that in together and build a multipurpose classroom that ties the U in together. So again, this whole building is like a big U. So the South America exhibits right here and then we'll be able to just connect, connect the dots basically, and we'll build our classroom space back there by the, by the playground. And it will just expand the square footage of here. So we'll be able to have more exhibit space where our party room is now, we'll be able to have more classroom space and we'll be able to host birthday parties and more meetings, different things like that. People can have their, their business meetings here. We'll be able to, it's just a really cool place. They'll, they'll be able to do more things than just have a birthday party here at the zoo, right? And all of that goes right back to the mission. So that is kind of the quick and dirty five-year approach to investment right here at the Zoology Zone Science Center, right? Over the next five years, we have plans through grants, sponsorships, donations to invest a little over four and a half million dollars into this location, right? That's our goal. That's what we want to do, but we can't do that without your all's help. And that's kind of the theme of where we are right now. We've been able to survive, we've been able to grow pretty substantially with nothing. Imagine what we could do with a little bit of something. Imagine what we could do with half of what some of these other organizations are getting on a monthly basis. Imagine what we could do if a quarter of our Facebook following signed up for a dollar a month, right? So the sky's kind of the limit. That's kind of where we are right now. And honestly, that's, that's the whole reason I just wanted to kind of data dump all this stuff out here and I'm so thankful that you guys are here, that you can see what we've got going on and, you know, I'm, I'm very anxious that, to, to keep that momentum going, but I can't do that without you guys. Did I miss anything? Did I, anything else that I said that I was going to say that I scrolled out? Anything? Okay. Okay. All right. Do I have any questions? Okay. All right. So that's all I've got. I thank you guys so very much for being here. I encourage you, take a look around. If you have any questions that you want to talk about offline, I'll close the live stream out here in just a minute and we can talk about offline. I do, I would like you guys to take one of the little brochures that I have up here at the front. I've also got my business cards up here as well. If you guys would like to take any of these with you, if you want to grab extra, please let me know. I am very, very eager to collaborate with, with anybody, really. Like I said, I just want this, I want this to continue to grow. So guys, I appreciate you all. Thank you very much for coming today and like I said, please feel free to take a look around. Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.